Well, I might as well call this meeting order. Welcome, everybody. The first item on the agenda is for me to read a proclamation commemorating the City of Shelton's School Choice Week. This is a national event, and the City of Shelton is entering into this. Whereas all children in the City of Shelton should have access to the highest quality education possible, and the City of Shelton recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in City of Shelton to be successful adults, and that quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of the City of Shelton, and the City of Shelton is home to a multitude of excellent education options from which parents can choose for their children, and the educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community. And our area has many high qualified teachers, teaching professionals who are committed to educating our children. And whereas the School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness for the need of effective educational options. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Gary Krantz, do hereby recognize January 22nd through the 28th, 2017, as City of Shelton School Choice Week. And I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. So that's a proclamation. And there's three places to sign. Do we want to sign this one, or you have the official copy that we sign?
Do you want to sign it now?
We can sign it later. That's fine. Okay. Next is our weekly commission reports, and we'll turn to Commissioner Moore first.
Okay. First of all, I will apologize, I'm going to have to duck out of this meeting early. I will be on my way to Olympia to meet with Senator Sheldon and the State Historic Preservation Officer, Allison Brooks, to discuss some options we'll have that will create economic development in the city through the use of the roundhouse and the rail. So we'll be talking about state parks, or about whether keeping the properties owned locally would make the most sense for us. But I'm excited to have state partners working on this, and Senator Sheldon, of course. On Wednesday, I will be attending a ribbon cutting for So Clean and Green on Railroad Avenue. I'm excited to see what services they're offering, and happy to welcome a new business to town. And on Sunday, I have Mason Transit Authority meeting where we will be meeting with all the staff and celebrating the progress that Mason Transit has made over the last year. And that's my week.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Gall?
Well, yesterday, I attended the dedication of the brand-new Habitat for Humanity House up on Washington Street, and it's beautiful. It's for a young mom and her two little boys, and it's exciting to see what Habitat does in our community for people that are living substandard living conditions, that they are able to, they have to put 400 hours sweat equity hours into their house, and they can get relatives to help, and it's all volunteer, and she has, they have a house payment each month. So it was really pretty and exciting, and they even landscape and build a fence around it. So it's exciting. Tuesday, I have my Board of Health at 3:00, and I'm going to be attending the school board meeting at 6:00. Wednesday, I will be attending the ribbon cutting for So Clean and Green up on Railroad. And Thursday's my weekly briefing. And that's it.
Thank you very much. On Wednesday, I will also be attending that ribbon cutting. That's what we do here in Shelton. And that completes our weekly commission reports. We have a general public comment period next. And let me just ask a question. Would it be relevant for Commissioner Moore to vote on the consent agenda before she leaves? Does that, it really doesn't make too much difference, there's just one, but we can do that and then have the public comment. Shall we do, is that, why don't we do that? Okay, so we're going to come to the public comment in just a second. We have a consent agenda before us. Are we ready for a reading of that?
Yes.
Okay. Could we please have a reading of the consent agenda?
Consent agenda, vouchers numbered 13512 through 13512, in the amount of $2,622.33. Meeting minutes from Commission Study Session of December 12th, 2016, and Commission Business Meeting from December 19th, 2016.
Thank you very much. Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
I second that.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The agenda passes. Thank you very much. Now, let's go back to general public comment. So first...
We have Kevin Smelson.
Sign down for three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm going to make my remarks pretty brief today. I just have a few thoughts that could hopefully make economic development in Shelton a tiny bit easier, just small, simple actions that can be taken. One thing that I noticed, and actually the main reason I'm here today, every, most days I drive through downtown Shelton on my way to work, and I always notice the Highway 3 sign is on Railroad, basically pointing people to the right from First Street to go make a right onto Front Street, which really doesn't have any, I think there's one business, it's kind of like a consumer-type business. And I believe that if that sign wasn't encouraging people to make a right onto Front Street, and then a left, and then make a right, bypassing several food places, for example, the Domino's, Chinese restaurant, the Dairy Queen, I think for people who are driving through Shelton on their way to the 3, it'd just be, that extra 30 seconds could make a difference and hopefully bring in a little more business to those businesses on First Street. So I wanted to express that.
And for clarification, Kevin, where exactly is that sign? I wrote it down here, but why don't you?
First Street and Railroad.
Okay, First and Railroad.
Yeah, there's a sign pointing to the right, basically making it seem like the best way to get to Highway 3 is making a right on Railroad, when really, to me, I generally just drive right to the subway and then make a right.
I will just, we don't usually do this, because that might be a great idea, the only problem, that's a state highway goes there.
Okay.
So I think we have to check, but Public Works may, that has to kind of go there. And just because I'm interested in anything that would make things work better, but I think that's where the state highway jogs, for Highway 3. And so I think that's where we kind of have to sign each, I think. But sorry to interrupt you.
It's okay.
We'll give him an extra 30 seconds, please.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm not sure, you know, what the process is.
We'll look into it, though.
Yeah, you know, it's just a thought I've had, because there's really not much on Front Street. Another thought, also possibly needing to work with either nonprofit group or the state. The Wallace-Neeland exit does have, you know, attraction signs, you know, lodging food, although a lot of the places mentioned, or there's only a couple of places mentioned, aren't even necessarily right off the Wallace-Neeland exit, but the Highway 3 and the city center exits, at least going north of the 101, I don't believe do have attraction signs, you know, what food is available off the exit. And I think having some signs, whether it's working with the Chamber of Commerce, or working with the state, Department of Transportation, whoever creates those signs, I think would also be something that would help draw people into Shelton. Again, not going to be a game changer, but hopefully can bring in, you know, some extra dollars. That's all I have today. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin.
Appreciate it. Anybody else?
There is no one else.
Okay. Next is an action agenda item, and that's going to be, is Craig Gregory here? Yeah, okay. He's going to talk to us about a little federal aid project, pro, pro, plus, how do you say that word?
Prospectus.
Yeah, that one.
Thanks, Mayor, Commissioners. As we discussed last week, the need for the change of the prospectus to include Phase 1 completion for the Park and Ride project. I don't have any additional information unless you have additional questions.
I'm here.
So prospectus, is that just a plan? Is that another word for plan?
Description.
Description, okay.
Just a description of the project.
Okay.
Did you insert that word?
I did not.
Oh.
That is the official federal funds word that they use.
Okay, I just, I was stumbling on it, but I think this is, this is something that we need to do, and so I appreciate your efforts. Any other questions?
Uh-uh.
Okay, so basically, this is a Public Works, or this is a public comment item, so if anybody else wants to ask a question, or I mean, add input on this, they are available. So, okay, at this moment, it looks like we need a motion to accept this SR3 prospectus.
I, I move to accept the SR3 prospectus. I think I said it right?
No.
To include the completion of Phase 1 and authorize the mayor to sign the updated prospectus.
I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve this SR3 prospectus, and for me to sign it. And so, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Against, nobody? So that passes. Thank you. All right. Next, we're going to have our city Assistant City Manager, Vicky Look, talk to us about a civic service committee new member.
Yes, we talked about this last week, that we had an opening on our Civil Service Commission, and we advertised the opening and brought forward a letter of request from Marilyn Vogler, and the city staff supports the appointment of Marilyn Vogler to the Civil Service Commission.
Okay, this is another one where if anybody from the public wants to weigh in on it, this would be the opportunity and the time. Seeing nobody stepping forward, is there a motion to appoint Marilyn Vogler to this civic service commission?
I move that we appoint Marilyn Vogler to the Civil Service Commission, and I guess that's it.
Yeah. There's a second?
I second that.
There's a motion and a second to approve Marilyn for this commission, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Welcome to the committee.
Thank you again, Marilyn.
All right. Item number three is going to be a financial services issue presented to us by our Director, Nola Van Nudig.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. As Mayor Krantz explained last week, this is cleaning up an administrative detail. The 2017 budget was approved with zero rate increases in water and sewer rates, and the 2017 final budget ordinance did not include that correction. So this document before you, Resolution 1894-0117, corrects that administrative error. So staff is requesting that the commission approve Ordinance 1894-0117.
This is also a public question or comment period, so if anyone from the public wants to enter in on this, they are more than welcome to do that. We already discussed this last week, and at this point, do we concur to move on with the second reading of this?
Yes.
Okay, I think I'll take, let's actually make a motion, I think. Do we, no, we actually need the second reading first. Okay. Six out of the reading first.
Ordinance number 1894-0117, second reading, amending ordinance number 1891-0216, the City of Shelton Final Budget.
So is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
I move that we approve...
Amending.
The amending ordinance number 1891-1216, the City of Shelton Final Budget.
There's a second?
I second that.
There's a motion and a second to approve this amended ordinance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, Nola. All right. That moves us into our business agenda. And the first item on that is item number one, and this is going to be presented to us by our Public Works Director, Craig Gregory.
Thank you again, Mayor, Commissioners. The City of Shelton has the opportunity to participate in a cooperative purchasing agreement with the Houston-Galveston Area Council. RCW 3934 allows for the inter-local agreement. Other cities around Washington participate within this, including the City of Olympia. And the budget allowed Public Works to purchase an asphalt zipper, which is a large capital purchase, and this inter-local would allow the city to purchase that piece of equipment without going to formal bid and the requirement to do that.
Any questions or comments? I think this makes things, what would be the advantages of doing this rather than what we normally do? Just explain to the public just a little bit more about why it'd be a little bit better or easier, maybe cost-effective for the City of Shelton?
The Houston-Galveston Area Council has basically already done the work to spec out and formally bid this piece of equipment, and it would allow us to go off of their bid item and not have to scope this ourselves and go out and advertise for formal bids. So it would allow us to do this in a timely fashion without using a ton of staff time to formalize our own bids.
So it's, it could be a cost-effective way to save some money for the City of Shelton?
Certainly would be.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
No. Maybe explain what the zipper with this machine is to anybody that maybe is not clear on it.
It zips asphalt.
It grinds up asphalt and allows the street department to recycle that as base material instead of excavating it and hauling it away.
And paying someone to take it.
Correct. It also will allow for easier trench excavation, where normally, right now, we go out, if we have to cut a roadway, we actually take an asphalt saw and have to cut both sides of the patch or the trench. This thing, you will be able to stick in the ground and, as the name of it, zip right across the road.
You used it on the trail along Brockdale, the bike trail, didn't you?
We did. We did. And we left that material in place and grated it out and paved over the top of it.
And that's beautiful out there. I love that out there.
Yeah.
Well, it appears that we concur, and that we would like to take this and place this on the action agenda for January 30th, 2017.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next is a resolution, and our city manager, Ryan Wheaton, is going to present that to us at this time.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. What we're bringing forward today is a resolution and also a petition for inclusion for the City of Shelton to join the Mason Conservation District. Years ago, the city was part of Mason Conservation District, but backed out, and for the last decade or so, citizens and the city itself have not been able to utilize the services that the Mason Conservation District has. They've had a lot of success with projects regionally. We would like to make sure that not only staff, but also people that live within the city limits are able to call on Mason Conservation District and get help, whether that be planning, potentially funding for projects that are going on, and then also looking at some landscape design and different things that would be a benefit to people within the city limits. So we're asking today for you to concur to move this ahead to next week's agenda, action agenda, and at that point, we would be looking to get a resolution and then a petition that would go to the Mason Conservation District, and then if they accept us to be included, then it would go to the Secretary of State for approval. This doesn't come with a fee associated. There are no fees that we would be required to pay, nor is there any regulatory oversight that Mason Conservation District has.
Very good.
All right. Any questions or comments? Sounds good, we've talked a little bit about this, and I think it's a good move for the City of Shelton, so we appear to concur on this issue. Let's please place this on the action agenda for January 30th, 2017. Item number three is a memorandum of understanding, and our Assistant City Manager, Vicky Look, is going to present that to us now.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Commissioner. I had talked to the commission earlier, well, I should say late, 2016. We had two bargaining agreements open for the 20, for the year 2017, and we did receive commission direction through that, bargaining that contract.
Your three minutes are up.
I didn't even know I was prescribing. Excuse me.
We, that's all, we can shut it off. Is that your phone? Oh, okay. We're, forgive the inconvenience. It was not planned, so.
It was an amber alert.
Yeah. Oh, maybe.
So anyway, we did go into bargaining with our customer service group, and we have reached an understanding, and I would like to present that to you today. We're going, asking for a one-year contract. We do have some discussion coming up about medical benefits for the year 2018. We're not entirely sure, so we agreed to put a committee together and look at options coming after the year 2017. So the one-year would be a cost of living adjustment of 1%, employer medical plan contribution and increase of $75 per month, and for all positions except for the police department records clerk, evidence clerk, it would be a 3% salary adjustment. And so for the police department records clerks, they did take on the assignment of managing our evidence, and so we have asked that they give, get a 5% salary adjustment with a 1% cost of living increase. So those are the requests coming forward. They fall within the range that the commission authorized to negotiate, so I would ask that if you have any questions, I can answer those for you.
I did call Vicky about an hour ago, and I said, hey, what's this, giving raises to people stuff? And she talked to me and explained everything, and we had talked about this before, but it kind of slipped my memory, but it's always a difficult task for us to make decisions on raising wages in this town. It's, as long as I've been here, it's always a battle. We are, we got this mark of like where most cities are, and we always try to get closer to it and closer to it, and so sometimes, you know, we just have to negotiate and work things out, and I've just been extremely, extremely pleased with the understanding with the city employees, and always trying to know that it's not easy, because you're getting money from these people, and you're paying for these services, and, you know, and then you've got budgets and all this stuff, but I think that you have to, you have to work yourself into a position where people are getting paid fairly for what they do. And so I asked the questions, and I feel comfortable in moving this forward at this time.
Yes.
So I think we concur on that.
Thank you.
So we would like to please place this on the action agenda for January 30th, 2017. And next, Vicky, you are up again, because this is the Hotel Motel Board Appointments, and so do you want to talk to us about that?
I do. This is a committee that we look at every year, and it's required through the RCWs to look at our tourism taxes, and have a committee, and the chair of that committee is the mayor, and we have two members who can request tourism dollars for festivals, events, or even facilities, and then we have two members from the, from the group that the motels, they collect the taxes. So we're asking for the reappointment of those four individuals. That's Annette McGee, who has the car show and also represents the museum, and Dwayne Wilson, who is from the Christmas Town Kiwanis Group. They are the folks that have, submit applications for grants, and then we have the owner of the Super 8, and Shelton Inn, who also sit on the committee and help us look through the applications and make recommendations to the city commission for awards of those grant funds.
And as the chair of that committee, I can say that the individuals involved are extremely conscious of the citizens of Shelton, and they are volunteers, and I would highly recommend that we reappoint them. They're doing an excellent job, from what I can see. Vicky also is on that, that board, also in a quasi-whatever role. What would be your role in that? Represent the city?
I do.
Yeah.
Secretary. Cory and I go to the meeting, and we sort of keep it on track and give any information, such as I would say that our ending fund balance shown for 2017 shows us at about $118,000. So it's a pretty healthy...
It's a good group.
Fund, yes.
Any other questions or comments concerning this? All right, then I think we do concur on that, and we would like to place this on the action agenda for January 30th, 2017. That completes our business agenda. And now, what we are going to do is enter into some administration reports.
Mayor Fitz, all right, can we get the police department to go first for this?
Absolutely. Well, they got the guns, and they got all those people.
And they're all standing there.
You know, like Mark Ziegler with the rake, and, you know, I mean, you know, and then the police, you know, with the uniform. I think a good idea from our city manager on that one, so.
I did ask Mark if it was okay to go first. I did. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. What I'd like to do today, instead of giving the traditional update and throwing out a bunch of numbers and stats and telling you where the police department is at, is present you with the Employees of the Year for 2016. They're voted on by the department, and then they come through my office for approval. The first one I'd like to bring up is Sarah Childers. Come on. She's got her camera with her, because she thinks she's taking pictures for everybody else.
Oh, okay.
Sarah was hired in 1996 here. As you can see, she was probably about 12 years old when she got hired in 1996. She is a records clerk, property and evidence technician, department historian, photographer, customer service, counselor, babysitter, and problem solver for the police department. She's a leader in the City Wellness Committee. She's adapted to a tremendous amount of change in the last couple of years, always positive with a smile. She never tells us it can't be done. She will tell us how we can get it done. And 2016 Employee of the Year, Sarah Childers. With the support of the commission in 2015, we were able to put on our own Police Officer Reserve Academy. With that, we graduated a number of police reserves. Chris was one of those that graduated. When he graduated, he was actually appointed as a provisional officer for a period of time when one of our officers left, and we had nobody to fill the spot. It's a temporary job with no benefits and an hourly rate. He did that job while continuing to work at his other job throughout part of '16. Now, here's the funny part, well, it's not funny for Chris, but let me explain how he got where he is and why he's where he's at. We then hired a permanent employee, and Chris didn't make that one. Chris stayed on as a reserve, volunteered his hours, continued to work another job, and everybody, unanimous choice, said he should be our next hire. So we have offered him a full-time job.
Yay.
And Chris will be starting at the academy sometime around April. And Reserve Officer of the Year, Christopher Downey. The next one is going to be kind of tough, because he's, he's actually going to call it a day. He's going to retire this year. When I say retire, I use that loosely. He's not actually retiring. He's just leaving to pursue other options. Sess had made an agreement with his family, he'd do 20 years and out, and he will have 20 years next month. Sess has done about everything there is to do with the police department, including been assigned to several task forces outside the police department. The biggest tell of how type of work Sess does is he was called back from that task force to fill spaces here last year. Didn't complain, didn't argue, came in and took charge of the detective unit, and since then has turned that detective unit around into something special. And they've been able to catch up on their backlog of cases, and one of the people wrote in one of their nominations, contrary to everybody at this city, Sess has no skeletons in his closet or anything to hide, and never had a bad word said about him. So Detective Maava is our 2016 Officer of the Year. So Detective Maava is our 2016 officer of the year. You know what, you're retiring, you didn't say something.
All right, yay! Like everything, it'll be brief, but what can I say? This is a testament to the power of the written word. You know, the chief really didn't say how many letters can be written. I wrote about 20 for myself, so. Really, I'm really grateful for this honor. I've gotten a lot of, you know, accolades throughout my career, but this one's really special because it comes from my comrades, coworkers, people I'm in the trenches with. So thank you so much to Patrol, the guys that, you know, put me up here. I'm grateful for that. I'm grateful for the city for allowing me a 20-year career that given me a lot of opportunities to do things, and I am happy. I'm really walking away from this with head held up high. I'm grateful for my tenure here. And finally, the chief, what a guy to be able to come to work with and to work for, to put 100 percent of my efforts into the daily routines of things. You do it because you have a good leader, and I've been fortunate throughout my career to have people like him and leaders and other supervisors in other agencies that emulate what the chief really stands for at this department. I'm really thankful for that, it made my job a lot easier, and so on behalf of me and my family and friends and family that are here, thank you so much for allowing me to work here 20 years in the place I grew up, and I'll come back in a different role, but still the role to be able to give to this city that I love. So thank you.
Thank you for letting us take that for the department update, and thank you, Sess, for your comments.
I had one other thing to add, is I do, I am so thankful for our police chief. Darren Moody, come back a little bit, come back just a second. Darren is, goes beyond the call of duty, and, you know, I'll tell you what, we've been working on something for the past couple of weeks, and it's, he has personally gotten involved with something. I called him this morning at, I think, 10 o'clock or so, 10 o'clock this morning, said, you know, we're working on this particular situation, and this kind of fell into this, and what can we do? And by 11 o'clock, a policeman came in, it was Mr. Campbell, came in and says, it's all taken care of, we did it. And, you know, I tell you, just you should get some award, and I'm just going to give you the mayor's award right now for best police chief in Washington City. There you go. You got it.
Oh, come back.
Oh, wait.
Come back.
Uh-oh.
Come back.
I thought I was.
And we have to have everyone get their singing voices.
Oh, what? Uh-oh.
It's his birthday.
Oh, birthday! Oh, we can do that. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Darren Chief Moody. Happy birthday to you. There you go. All right. There you go. Thank you very much. All right, now where do we want to go? Are we going to go back to Mark Ziegler with his rake?
He dropped papers.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. One, couple more?
Yeah, put them in my jewelry store.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Few updates from community development department today. As I mentioned in the past, the city's comp plan is in process. Draft EIS will be released on February 2nd. We have a briefing for the city commission scheduled for February 13th, so you'll see an official briefing on that, on that draft comp plan at that time. We'll kick off a 60-day opportunity for the public to comment and follow that up with a public hearing prior to adoption. Within the building department, as of today, 19 total permits have been submitted in January. A few, no single-family residences, but a few remodels, local businesses, Starbucks, Super 8 Motel, or a couple locations that have been undergoing some remodels and things like that, so some improvements out there in the community. I dropped off the spring recreation brochure to you, they're in the green flyer, that just came out, it's in distribution now, announcing various spring programs. One event that's also included in there is the Shelton Arts Commission's Empty Bowls Project. The dates have been set for that for March 1st, 8th, and 15th. This is an annual project that's coordinated through the Shelton Arts Commission to integrate public art project and a fundraiser for the Saints Pantry Food Bank. Typically, about 100 people participate that annually, raising usually in the neighborhood of $1,200 for the Saints Pantry Food Bank. Great event, open to everybody, people can come in, make a ceramic bowl, and get a great meal from some of the local participating restaurants as well. Another department that, that falls within CED is the facilities department, and I really have to thank the commission for the approval of the 2017 budget that added a half-time custodian to, to facilities. We were operating with one and a half custodians within the department, a maintenance worker and then a facilities manager. That half-time addition increased that, the existing half-time employee to a full-time position, so really it allowed us to bring that employee away from the library where they spent, they spent their entire shift, the four hours a day at the library, just cleaning that facility, and they can come help with other facilities now. And that really helps not just cleaning facilities, but it really trickles up or trickles down to the other maintenance activities. You might see the main floor out here, out front, received a wax job the last couple of weeks. Floors upstairs received a coating of wax, and those are performed by our maintenance, a maintenance worker that was filling in for custodial activities before the half-time position was filled in '17. So those are some of the activities, along with changing ballast and light bulbs and doing small electrical and plumbing repairs and things like that, that, that were kind of being pushed to the back just to get the general sanitation taken care of. The custodial positions have also taken in with my new role, a greater role down here downstairs, the rooms that we're in now, the room out there with setting up tables and chairs, cleaning up after events and things like that. So we're able to, we're able to push some of those things off on the custodians and take care of some of the quick and easy events that happen on a daily basis down here in the civic center. And then that half-time custodian also allows us to backfill on vacations and sick leave as well. We had a difficult time moving staff around, obviously, with one and a half custodians. If somebody was out, it's pretty tough to backfill those with just the one other person that you have, and it really allows us to change up the work shift and get rid of some of the repetitive activities that could lead to injury with some of our staff. We're doing the same thing, same motions on a regular basis that can lead to some injuries, so we're able to change shifts around, change duties around, and, and create some, some benefits there for our employees. Facilities has also been busy installing iWash stations in all of our facilities, that's part of the LNI's requirement to have iWash stations where there's some chemicals or cleaning agents mixed, so we're getting those complete by the end of this month. For LNI inspections, we've had numerous HVAC issues and repairs to complete, a few roof and furnace repairs as well throughout the facilities. We've had a number of staffing changes within the building, office moves, things like that, so putting up desks, taking down desks, moving furniture around, and changing phone systems around. Our, our phone system actually requires somebody to come in, reprogram them, and start moving some wires around too, so there is a little bit of task when we're just adding a new employee or moving somebody from one cubicle or office to another, so it does take some tasks and impacts our facilities department. The last thing I'll mention today is some of the work that I mentioned last month up at the library, outside the library, some vegetation removal. We're just wrapping up some of that now. The PUD was generous enough to provide some additional lighting up there to take care of some of the concerns that came through our discussions with the Timberland Regional Library staff, as well as the police department when they did assessments up there and to open up some sightlines, provide more lighting, make it a little more visible up there, so we're hoping that some of those, some of those changes create a more pleasant environment, especially outside of the facility up there. I can answer any questions if you have any for me this time.
I'll have a comment. It looks great up at the library, just those trees and the brush trimmed back and the extra lighting, yeah, looks good. Very good.
Thank you very much, Mark, for all that you do for the city. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, next, it looks like we have a fire chief in the audience, Tim McKernan.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, welcome. I'll give you some stats during your packets that you'll see there. We finished up our year for the district at about 5,172 responses. Of that, of course, 77 percent are EMS responses. Also, you'll see our total basically goes through our transports, and on the other side of that is our city numbers, which the mayor absolutely loves, and we're at 2,482. Pretty much it was even with the years before, with, of course, same thing, our average is about 82 percent on the EMS calls. Bringing you attention to what's happening in 2017, to date, as through, as of just a few minutes ago, we are now up to 414 responses, which turns out to be about 18 a day. That's up probably almost six more than we normally would, would happen. The crews are extremely busy. Can we relate it to anything? It's more, again, our EMS calls are running about 85 percent in the city, and in the district, they're running right around 80 percent. I think the cold weather, the calls we're getting for service are certainly out there. We've had more calls, especially carbon monoxide, we're doing a lot of prevention stuff on our websites, trying to make sure how things work. We, I think we dodged several bullets when it relates to snow, working with the city folks and the different other departments to make sure our EOC was ready to go, and it was. I think we're prepared, and that's great. When we're prepared, the snow's not going to happen, and we like it that way as well. So that's kind of what's happened in the fire service business.
Any questions or comments?
No.
Thank you very much, chief, appreciate it. All right, and then the last of our department updates is Shelby Conklin. Not that the last is bad, it's just, it's just that's the way the order fell in.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner. I'm just going to give you a quick overview of some court statistics and then describe to you some of the projects that community service has done in the last month. So we've just under 1,000 case filings filed for 2016. 364 of those are infractions, so they're civil in nature, not criminal offenses. 610 criminal offenses. 201 of those were criminal traffic, and 409 were non-criminal traffic. So those filings, there were 179 hearings held on infractions, and 2,121 hearings on the criminal matters. Now, for the community service report, they're working currently, and maybe finished up the first part of this work that they're doing with Officer Campbell of Shelton High School in Oakland, Bay Middle School on the pond, and the trail system behind the school. That's an area where students used to loiter. So they began cleaning the area of litter on the 18th, when I did this report or had these statistics provided, they had cleaned up 540 pounds of litter in there, and so they'll be cutting back the brush and removing a man-made dam between the ponds, and it's an ongoing project, something that they're going to be continuing to work on. They assisted the solid waste department by picking up Christmas trees the customers had put out on their garbage pickup day. There was a citizen complaint that someone had dumped a large amount of garbage behind the old ANW. The bags were torn open and people were going through it. The trash appeared to be from a business nearby, so they cleaned that up and spoke with Eric in community development, who'll be working with the businesses to, to get their bins locked. Chief Moody requested that they clean the Capitol Hill Trail where they picked up and disposed of what was described as lots of garbage. I don't know the poundage or anything, and they, in that, they found 12 needles. The Loop Field Trail, they cleaned all the trails coming down from Olympic Highway and ending at Loop Field and disposed of approximately 120 pounds of garbage there and three needles. In the civic center, they cleaned all the chairs, tables, the walls, the trim in the public areas of the civic center, as well as the floors in the storage room and the chairs in the courtroom and in the lobby. They cleaned the library water tank trail, the trails that lead off that trail, where they also removed one inactive camp and 28 needles. They picked up litter on 4th, 5th, the downtown core, East Street, Adams Street, SR3, Wagon Wheel Park, 101 Wallace Nealon Boulevard off-ramp, Olympic Highway, and Magnolia. So they accomplished all of that from the 1st of January to the 18th of January, despite the freezing cold temperatures and the lack of the use of their van, so.
That was the 1st of January of this year?
Yes.
18 days?
Yes.
Well, less than 18, because they don't work on the weekends.
Yes, that's what they've done since January 1st.
That is absolutely incredible.
Yeah, so.
Probably one of the best of those type of activities that I've heard from any city in the state, you know, I mean, don't lose them, keep them here.
They do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you for your report, appreciate it. All right, any final touches from our city manager?
We plan to have the solid waste options brought forth the next couple of weeks. We're just working through some final financial details with the finance department, so expect that. And then we do have terms ready for a contract on the jail with the county. We worked through those with the sheriff's department over the last couple of months, and this is a long time coming. We operated essentially all of last year without a contract, or they operated for us, so we're excited to bring that forward. We are likely to bring this on a tight timeline. We're going to work with the county side to make sure that we bring it forward, but we may bring this forward next week under the action agenda, just to make sure, sure we have things locked in on both sides as soon as possible.
All right, appreciate that comment, thank you very much. Our next meeting will be Monday, January 30th, at, again, 2:00 PM in the afternoon. This meeting is adjourned.